Good, thanks for being here. Hope everybody's made it through Hurricane Helene well and everybody's we're getting back to normal. So it's been an interesting couple of, you know, almost a week. And as you know, there's places that are still dealing and struggling with the aftermath of that. So thank you for being here. It's October 2nd. This is here for Port Royal's public hearing. Called the meeting to order. The purpose of this is our public hearing is to discuss and open up for public comment. Ordinance 2024-14 and ordinance to amend Chapter 20 Trees of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Port Royal, South Carolina. Okay, I do not have anything for this to public speak, but is there anyone in the public that would like to be heard on ordinance 2024-14? Hearing done. We will close the public hearing. Thank you. Quick and easy. Okay, up next, Council Workshop, called to order, and we'll move right in. We've got a presentation from the Old Village Association, Mrs. Nancy Plank.
All these smiles on their faces.
I know, it's because they had a successful time.
Evening, Mayor, Council, Van. We wanted to come tonight and tell you how we made it with Oktoberfest.
Please.
It was a nail biter right to the end on Friday if we were even going to have it, but we decided to go ahead with it. And I think everything worked out well. Everybody seemed to appreciate that they could get out and have some fun and everything. Unfortunately, some of our plans didn't go the way we wanted them to, so that's why I'm here tonight. I'm also bringing two of our board members, Mike Marrows, our Vice Chair, and Amber Hewitt is our Secretary. Our Treasurer, Eric Fennell could not make it, and of course, you know the little girl over there in the corner, Brooke.
Who's that little girl?
And that's the whole crew that wants to be special.
That we're so proud of in her puns and colors tonight.
She's growing up so fast.
We wanted to do something special in coordination with Oktoberfest. So we partnered up with Nick from Shellring, and Liz Smith did our logo. And we created a special Port Royal beer, limited edition, for the festival. And we also put the logo of the 150th on our shirts that we sold. So at this time, we would like to give you all your own Port Royal beer and shirt.
Thank you so much. That was great.
Thank you.
For thinking of Nick. Say, how limited is the addition? How long can people get up to it? Okay. So you've got six more cases, and if you want to get up, like I said, I'm going to hold on to this one. It's pretty cool, celebrating the 150th. 1874 to 2024, German Pilsner. Port Royal Export.
Cold beer.
That is so cool.
Wow, that's awesome.
Cold beer.
So that's our little gift to the town for the 150th, and I hope you enjoy it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, enjoy after the meeting.
Thank you so much. For shirts.
Do we want to get a picture?
Yep.
Yeah, let's give one with the old village.
Are y'all underage?
That's okay. I got a dollar. I'll send a check there every Tuesday.
Ready? One, two, three. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you guys.
I can't read that all at once, man. I'll supervise that.
Not me, brother.
What we really should do is go down to Nate's.
We're good at the shirt design.
Yes.
I like that.
Liz, did Liz do the shirts?
She did the 150th. She did the 150th part, and then Alpha Graphics did the rest of it.
Wonderful, beautiful.
That was great.
And I did, I just wanted to say thank you to y'all. I mean, it was a testing weekend. That was, you know, it was, you said we went through a category four hurricane the day before. I think I read today something, the deadliest, it's in the top two of the past 50 years deadliest storms. And we see the destruction in the other states, so the fact that y'all are out there, you're volunteers, a lot of y'all, your houses were out of power. You had messes in your yard, and pulled it together, and it was hot, y'all were sweating. And y'all got it done, and it was great. So thank you all so much. Absolutely, so.
Mayor, can I just say one thing? This council, just so the citizens know, the council was in communication the whole time with each other, and going and checking on different citizens in the town, and trying to keep up with everybody, keep up where the, where the trees were down. And I just think that this council deserves a hand for everything that they did, us out riding the streets, I myself, I don't care. But the rest of them, and Brooke and Van, I mean, that's a lot. And we wanted to make sure that everybody was okay, and, you know, especially our senior citizens in town. You know, we, we have to check on them, because sometimes they don't have anybody to check on them. So it's very important, and I think it's, it's a great honor to be a part of this team that helped to make sure that happened in our community. Thank you.
Absolutely. And I was going to say something, but just kind of, since we're all on Oktoberfest, and I did want to address it, because I saw there, you know, some people online, they were upset that we had the festival. And I just, and they, you know, and I understand, it was, it was very, it was very, it was, you know, it was, it was uncomfortable. It was a testing time. There was trees down. I mean, that was the worst. And Van's been here a lot longer than me, he said that was probably top two or three storms he's been through. You know, just to kind of give you a little story of what that happened and how we ended up getting there, just because I always want people to understand how we got there, the decisions that we're making. So, you know, Thursday night, we were on phone calls with the emergency services that run through the sheriff's office. And, you know, it was kind of, it was going to be, you know, everybody was looking at the map, and it was going left. And it's going to be a little rainy, it's going to be a little windy, but we'll be all right. And then we know what happened. We all went to bed Thursday night, and we woke up Friday morning, and it was a lot worse than anybody thought it was going to be, not just for here, but everywhere. We had four downed trees just in the village, on power lines, snap telephone poles. Again, a lot worse than anyone planned on and thought it would be. However, Friday we woke up, we immediately got on the phone, we started calling state representatives, agencies. Dominion, I mean, it was harassing, how many text messages, phone calls, and voicemails I left, and I know the rest of this council, throughout the whole day. We initially reached out, and we were, we asked, can we clean up the piles? You know, we had some trees down on some of the roads, can we clean up the piles? We were informed that the power lines had been turned off. Can we clean them up? They said, do not touch them. If a tree is on a power line, touching a power line, near a power line, for safety reasons, do not touch it. So, because we were like, well, we've got the equipment, we could go clean this up, and then y'all can work on the electrical stuff. They said, stand, do not do that. So we did not do that. So what we did was, we tried to put tape on some of the trees, put some cones out, and make it as safe as possible. Then we looked to the question of, we have a festival for tomorrow. Can we execute the festival? Yes. If we do have the festival, will it interfere with any emergency services whatsoever? The answer was no. If we don't have the festival, will the electricity get turned on any faster? No. So at that point, the decision was, let's have the festival. Let's give people something to do. Let's give them a chance to get out of the house, give them time to get their mind off what was going on. And again, most of the people that were volunteering and at the festival, their power was out too, and had messes in their yard. We were all in it, and I do want to say thank you to the staff again. And also do want to say thank you to Dominion and the linemen that came in. There are still places in the state of South Carolina that do not have power today. Our power went out Friday early morning. I believe entire Port Royal was turned back on by Sunday night. There's places, I've got friends and people I know that are all around South Carolina still without power, and are being told they might not have it till Friday. And I know we've all seen what's going on in North Carolina and those areas. So we're very lucky Dominion got here. Like I said, that storm was a lot worse than anyone expected. They got in, they snapped into gear, they got us back up and running, and I really appreciate their work. They called in linemen from other states. Those guys were out there, hot, sweating, working, and getting it back on. So it was amazing. I know it was frustrating and uncomfortable for a while, but this community, I think, really came together and did a great job. And on that note, this community is amazing, because as you've seen, we've been having supply drops. And this community, one thing that's great about this, this area, always comes together in a tragedy, always. In the time I've been here, doesn't matter if it's a hurricane, a tornado, whatever we go through, this community steps up and has each other's backs. And it's amazing to be a part of. There's been supply drops all over, all over Port Royal, Ladies Island, City of Beaufort. They're moving something, I think Shellring's got 40 pallets of goods in it right now. Kazubi Kazooz has over 15, 20. I just left there. So we're looking at 50, 60 pallets just from our community going up to Asheville and that area. It's amazing. And just in a few days, we've been able to pull that together. That's not, that's just people coming together. That's not an agency that came here and told us to do that. That's not being done by any government or agency. That's just people helping people, and it's really beautiful to see and be a part of. So I just want to say thank you. I know, again, it was frustrating, I know it was uncomfortable, but we got through it, and I think we did a really great job. So thank you to everyone that, that helped out in that, so. That's, that's kind of it from me on the hurricane situation. Anything? Anybody want to add anything?
Thank you, Mayor, for your guidance, and probably all people there, made it happen.
Just keep that burning thoughts in prayers.
Yes, please.
A lot, a lot. I mean, it's heartbreaking what's going on up there. Up next, a beautiful Port Royal amenity, the Friends of the Cypress Wetlands presentation by Mr. Scott Clark.
Hello, Mayor, Council, Staff. I thought I'd come in today and give everybody kind of a status report on, on the Cypress Wetlands. First off, as everybody probably knows, we completed Phase 1 of the boardwalk repairs, and just in the nick of time, before the storm. This phase, we replaced over half of the main boardwalk and the 16th Street boardwalk walkboards. The circle around the Cypress trees on 14th and 15th Street. Plus, we replaced the top rail of the boardwalk handrail between 14th and 15th and made it angled, just like we did to the main boardwalk several years ago. So over the entire phase, we replaced over 1,600 boards, walkboards, and 57 top rail boards were replaced. We hope to do the rest of the boardwalk in one more phase, hopefully next spring, next summer, if we can, if we can make it that long. I want to thank the town for their approval, their funding, and, and their cooperation. I especially want to thank Greco Building Supply, specifically Richard Gray Senior, for giving us an amazing discount. He gave us a 60% discount on, on material. And I also want to thank Christian Hernandez of ANA HDC Construction, who performed all the labor at his cost. A few weeks ago, we scheduled, not knowing we were going to have the storm, we scheduled a volunteer wetlands workday. And that is coming up on Saturday, the 12th, at 9 o'clock. We're looking for as many volunteers as we can get, because for those of you that have walked the wetlands, we have just piles and piles of debris on either side of the pathway, on all three of the, of the main wetlands areas. And we need, we need a lot of people. For those coming, we ask that you wear gloves, and preferably long pants, boots, and, and long sleeve shirts. And you might want to wear bug spray. And please bring as many landscape tools as, as you can. Anything that you have at home would be, would be helpful. Loppers, hedge trimmers, pruners, et cetera, anything, rates, anything that you can think of. Sign up sheets are at the new public library and right here in Found Hall. Plus, you can go to our website at F O P R C W dot org, and click on the volunteer tab and sign up there. And if you have any questions, you can see me or Janice Nisbet, who is our volunteer coordinator. You can see us afterwards, and we can get you signed up and answer any questions that you may have. Next, I'm excited to announce that we will be holding a speaker series about the Cypress Wetlands. We've already secured Travis Folk, whose father was involved in the original construction of the Cypress Wetlands. He will be doing one speaker, one of the speaker series, and then the rest of them will be later in the year, later in the year in April. And we're going to correspond at around the time of the Birthday for the Birds. And we'll finalize more of that along the way. But, and Nancy sold my thunder. Nick is doing a, creating a beer for us as well. And he will be, so we, at the first series, he will roll that, that beer out, and, and then the entire month of January, February, March, and April. And then in, in April, when we have it, towards the end of April, he, Nick has agreed to donate a portion of his proceeds to the Cypress Wetlands. So we're very excited about that. And, and finally, last but not least, I would like to announce that the Port Royal Cypress Wetlands was awarded the Gold Medal for Best Attraction in Beaufort County in 2024. And the Friends of Port Royal Cypress Wetlands, the 501(c)(3) was awarded the Bronze Medal for the Best Nonprofit Organization in 2024. We'd like to, again, thank the town and everybody that voted for us to make this possible. So thank you very much.
I have a question for you. What, is there, how often do you have to replace boards like that? What's your thoughts on that?
Well, those have lasted.
Why were those replaced?
We built it in 2002, when it finished, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
A lot of that, not that, not the amphitheater portion, but definitely, yeah.
So, you know, every 10, 15 years, something like that.
I just wanted.
It's treated number one wood, so it's, it's the toughest grade of lumber that we can get, short of the regate grade stuff that nobody can afford. So I'm guessing it's going to last another 15 to 20 years.
I'm glad y'all did that. It looks great.
Yeah, the amphitheater looks wonderful.
It does look good.
So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just want to say, thank you so much, Scott. You have a great group. Y'all doing an amazing job. Y'all get stuff done, and you know, the Cypress Wetlands is such an amenity and attraction for Port Royal. We love it. And again, y'all, it's just great that Citizens Group, you step up, and like I said, y'all get things done, and it's amazing. So thank you all so much. One more presentation on tonight. We've got from Mrs. Hope Cunningham, Cherry Hill Oak, update.
Good evening. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm very happy to be here and very grateful for how hard you've worked to get us through this hurricane season. I'm also a little daunted following after an act like the Cypress Wetlands. It's an impressive, impressive achievement. I want to, can you guys hear me? It's hard for me to tell. So it's been a while since I've been here, so I may go over a little bit that you've heard about. But I know there's people here that aren't familiar with Cherry Hill Park. So I kind of wanted to bring you up to speed on our progress plans and opportunities for community enrichment. First of all, our mission at the Friends of Cherry Hill Oak is to partner with Beaufort County Passat Parks to provide for the care and protection of the 2013 South Carolina Heritage Live Oak, and to support the preservation and stewardship of the natural resources of Cherry Hill Park. These resources will, will provide important cultural, ecological, and economic benefits to Beaufort County residents for generations to come. And I'll just go over this quickly. Cherry Hill Oak is the oldest and largest live oak in Beaufort County. Michael Murphy of Preservation Trees found the, found this tree during the tricentennial effort to locate the oldest tree in Beaufort County. And this tree's been here since before any Europeans settlers were here. It's about 300, it's over 350 years old. So it's witnessed colonialism, revolution, civil war, devastating hurricanes, everything, everything that Beaufort has been through since Europeans settled here. How we got here is in 2022, concerned citizens of the Town of Port Royal rallied to protest a proposed development that threatened this tree, the 2013 Heritage Live Oak, and dozens of landmark and specimen trees gracing the marsh front Cherry Hill parcel. It, it backs up to Battery Creek Marshes. So we rallied and showed up and protested, and then we organized the Friends of Cherry Hill Oak to advocate for the preservation of property, enlisting the South Carolina Coastal Conservation League, the Open Land Trust, and Citizens of Beaufort County. Eventually, the property was deemed eligible for rural and critical lands, and the landowner agreed to sell the property to Beaufort County. It is now a passive park, but remains closed. So what's happening now, oh, and also, we organized Friends of Cherry Hill Oak and raised money to take care of the tree. So what's happening now, Beaufort County Passat, Beaufort County bought the parcel, the whole parcel, almost 12 acres. The owner, tenant Houston, donated $50,000 to Beaufort County Passat Parks at the time of purchase. A gate has been, has been installed. No trespassing signs have been posted. The cleared property has been bush hogged. Hazard trees have been removed. Reduction pruning has been completed. However, critically important lightning protection has not been installed, and it's been over a year since the county bought the property. The Heritage Oaks root system is currently encroached upon by a dense network of Yopon trees that have to be very carefully removed. And once the 60-foot diameter root zone is cleared, wood chip mulch needs to be applied to the root zone to ensure the health of the tree. These efforts will also enhance the aesthetic beauty of the tree. These improvements are on hold, to my understanding, pending an executed memoriam of understanding, memorandum of understanding between Beaufort County and the Town of Port Royal. The Friends has sufficient funds to cover all the tasks that I described for the tree, and we have offered those funds to the county. They didn't want to take them at the time. If the Town of Port Royal enters into this agreement with Beaufort County, then we can give the money to you. We can just rewrite our mission statements so that we can give the money to you. We don't care, we just want the tree taken care of, and most especially, we want that lightning protection as soon as possible. Since I started working on the tree, preserving the tree, and establishing the park, my ideas about the park have changed a little bit, and I wanted to share them with you to see if we could find some consensus on the way forward with this park. First of all, we need to finalize the memorandum of agreement. I don't know if that's happened. Then we need to request, you need to request a grant from us to cover the tree maintenance recommended by Michael Murphy, the master arborist. And then I ask that we consider requesting that Beaufort County open the park to pedestrians. You know, I keep getting the message from Beaufort County that we can't open the park because there's no infrastructure, there's no place to park. But there's a lot of people within walking distance that are used to walking it. And they are very upset by the fact that it's closed, and they can't go into it unless they break the law. And it's not unsafe anymore. There was a reason for it to be closed at first, because there were many hazard trees. And because it was so overgrown that there were snakes and poison ivy and what have you. That's not the case anymore. And we would like to see the park open to pedestrians. In addition to that, we're going to need help, we're advocating to Beaufort County for funding to develop the park. You know, I had no idea when I entered into this how much it costs to plan and develop a park. I think I could do it for a lot less, but Beaufort County Passat Parks, that's the way they like to do things. And it's probably going to be five years before that park is open. It took Whitehall five years. But the first step is for us to band together and appeal to Beaufort County Council to fund the development, to fund the design, the development and design of the park, or the, the, what do they call it, infrastructure and architectural engineering, or something like that, A and E. And then we have to advocate for the funds to implement that design. And one of the reasons I'm standing here in front of you is because I have a grand view of what I'd like to see this park turn into. And I would like to partner with Beaufort County, I'd like to partner with the Town of Port Royal, and I'd like for us all to work together on the design of this park. And hopefully, by the time I get to the, at the end of this presentation, you'll see why. So another thing that Town of Port Royal can do is support the fundraising efforts of the Friends by linking to our website, which we already took care of. And as I said before, I'd like to partner with Beaufort County Parks, the Friends of Cherry Hill Oaks, and the Town of Port Royal to develop a vision for the park. So I added this slide in because I want you to look on the left. It's a little tiny. But what the image on the left is a Google Maps update. Michael Murphy put the Cherry Hill plantation marker on Google Maps. And lest you guys think that nobody cares about Cherry Hill Park, there's been 10,000 views as of six weeks ago, people looking to find that tree. 10,000. That's a lot. And I would also like to remind you about the Port Royal Comprehensive Plan Update. It's been years since you did it, but that's on the right. And the topics the community thinks are the most important to focus on in this plan. Number one is environmental responsibility. Number two is quality and quantity of parks and open space. So our vision for the park has morphed a little bit. The Friends of Cherry Hill Park recognize that the Town of Port Royal is growing rapidly, and that habitat loss due to development is inevitable. We may cry over it, but it's happening. We applaud the town's adaptation of a tree ordinance that respects the considerable value of our trees to our quality of life and environmental health. Unfortunately, habitat loss affects much more than trees. Our native birds and pollinators are threatened by habitat fragmentation, pesticides, and non-native species. About 90% of plant-eating insects are specialists that rely on a single family for survival. Think monarch butterflies and milkweed. Cherry Hill Park offers an opportunity for habitat restoration that can serve as a model for all public green spaces, significantly offsetting habitat loss due to development. Investing in habitat restoration at Cherry Hill Park will also provide priceless ecological, educational opportunities, and access to natural beauty and wildlife. educational opportunities, and access to natural beauty and wildlife. Sorry it's taken so long, I'm trying to hurry. Why native plants? Biodiversity. Native plants provide important food, shelter, and nesting sites that maintain ecosystem health. A single nesting native bird requires over three thousand caterpillars to feed its young in one nesting season. I learned that at Green Dreams. Some birds return to the nest every three minutes to feed their nestlings. Water quality. Native plants improve water quality and prevent erosion. Deep-rooted, salt-tolerant species offer, species filter water, prevent erosion, and keep our waterways healthy. Low maintenance, because they are adapted to local soil and climate, they require less maintenance than traditional landscaping. Natives have evolved to exist with local pests and diseases, reducing the need for pesticides. Once established native species, landscape systems require no extra fertilization. In average conditions, natural rainfall satisfies watering needs. Natural beauty. Natural landscaping is a beautiful way to invest in our region's future eco-health. Rewilded public gardens create rich vaults of biodiversity and habitat restoration. Public access to beauty and nature should be public rights. Our happiness quotient improves when we have access to safe, beautiful, natural spaces. That's just a picture from the park on the left. On the right, you see monarch and a milkweed. Above the monarch is our beloved painted bunting that likes to eat white millet, which I would love to plant at the park. So I think that's the end of what I put together. I know I've taken a lot of your time. I'm happy to ask questions. And I do have one further comment regarding the new tree ordinance. I would ask that council considers dedicating funds that may be raised by tree finds, tree cutting fines, to rewilding our native, our residential, our community green spaces. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. Thanks for bringing us to speed on that. I mean, this is a great project. I've been involved in it since the beginning, so knowing exactly where it's at and the process is very helpful. Now we know how to move forward, and we can start reaching out to the county. And now that we know what you need, we can go out and push to get it. So thank you, because yeah, we are all excited about it. It's pretty cool that we've got that tree in our community. That's another example, people in the community just coming together and doing that on their own. So we really appreciate it. We think it's a great thing. But now that we know, we got an action plan, so that's, that's good, so.
All right. And I would also ask, you know, to be kept in the loop, there's been some difficulty with communication with passive parks and, and, you know, I really often don't know what's going on at the park unless Michael Murphy tells me. And, you know, we're working to raise money for the park. We're here to help, and we would like to be kept up to speed on what's going on.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing us up to speed. No more presentations, three great presentations. Absolutely great way to start out. Up next, interviews for the planning commission appointment.
I don't, I think we had candidates withdraw. You do have one written statement by one of the candidates.
Yeah, so we've gotten the application, so we'll, we have an executive session planned later, so there's two gentlemen in it, I believe, two gentlemen, just one? Okay, well, that makes it really easy. So thank you so much for signing up for the planning commission. That helps. Okay, up next, council briefing.
All right. Kind of a litany of topics that we've covered significantly over the last several months. Speed humps, we're moving forward with the ones that we were approved via SCDOT. We have asked them to revisit, we did ask them to revisit Drayton Drive. One of the, the problems that they have is the speed limit for Drayton is thirty miles per hour. So their answer outright is basically, you cannot install a, a speed hump or bump on Drayton Drive. I think we would have to get the speed limit changed there in order for that to happen.
What's it got to be, twenty-five?
Yes. So we do not own that road, so we would need to probably engage an engineer to provide a justification for the change in speed. Or we could certainly ask our local representative to assist us with SCDOT in addressing that.
Okay, yeah, because it's five miles an hour, so.
Yes, exactly. All right. We're still working through the TAPS grant, which is that extension of the Spanish Moss Trail through the second portion of the, the Safe Harbor property, and that would be the, the piece that would go through the Bluff neighborhood. Obviously, that's on hold until we can resolve the issues with Safe Harbor on the crossing. Just kind of general information about that, the permit for the crossing does expire in April, so we'll need to have something under contract and in place prior to April in order to get the Spanish Moss Trail across Rebo Road onto that property. So, and we're making some efforts there. Basically, West Paris and Villages, those are two of those infrastructure projects that we're working on for drainage. I think we're there. I think we had one impediment with that one. It was a specific ID number that our contractor needed to obtain to, to be federally authorized to do that work, and we finally did receive that, they received that authorization, so they'll be moving forward with that. Twelfth Street parking layout and sidewalk, that, the utility looks have been done. The storm is now over, and Joko is beginning construction.
Monday.
Monday. So we're excited about that. The next one's obviously related to stormwater drainage, Casablanca. Still, we're estimating, hoping to have an estimate very shortly, should have it, had it by the end of September, we should have it in hand soon. And we also have the CIP master plan for stormwater that will give us a kind of a blueprint for everything moving forward, and that is something, we did receive a presentation on from our engineers, and we'll make a larger presentation to council later, once we get it a little bit cleaned up and more formalized. We do have the master plan in place as well for sanitary sewer. That's kind of a broken record, but I want to keep bringing that up. We do have an idea of what our, our needs are on Rebo. I think at that point, I think it was a six or seven million dollar price tag for sewer along Rebo in that economic development area that we're concerned about. Town Public Works facility, survey work has been completed. We're kind of scaling back depending upon where we end up with ARPA and what the level of work that we'll do there. We would like to see some hard servicing. We definitely need to do some work on the roofs there, but we, we think we have some options to address some of the stormwater drainage, kind of the large area that might incorporate property that we own.
And just to pop on that, so everyone knows what we're talking about. So with our ARPA funds, we're looking at our Public Works Department. I don't know who's ever visited that site over there on Waddell. We think we can make it a little more efficient, bring it up to a little more modern Public Works facility. We've got a great crew over there, we've got a great staff, but what they're working with is, it's been there for a long time, and they could use an upgrade, and we want to continue to provide the best services we can for the town. So we're talking about looking into making that site work better instead of now, if you kind of go over there, it's just kind of a
Yeah.
...open site with some piles of stuff in it and all that. So we're trying to, like I said, take that and kind of modernize it and make it more efficient for the
And don't go there now because of the storm, there are more
Yeah, there's more, yes.
I will say that we, we reached out to the county, and they've activated a closer facility to allow the disposal of what we're seeing in the yard debris relative to the storm, which I'll cover a little bit later.
I just said, what do our Public Works guys do with what they have is amazing.
Naval Hospital Sidewalk, nothing really new to report on that. Still looking at an early twenty twenty-five construction timeline. Obviously, that one's taken now almost a decade. Short-term rental task force, I put in the folders, the minutes and the draft minutes from the last several meetings that the group has held. They're still working towards getting all a draft of an ordinance that we can get enacted prior to the end of the moratorium. They've been focused on a number of issues, but I think we're trying to wrap this up. I still think we're addressing caps and the transfer issue. I think it's been worked into draft, there's been a lot of back and forth on that, but they do understand the timeline involved. It'd be necessary to have an ordinance in place prior to the end of the moratorium to address any ongoing concerns that have been raised to council on how we want to handle short terms.
Absolutely. You just expressed to them that there is a timeline, and if they can't make a decision, then we will make the decision.
Yeah, exactly. Safe Harbor, I still, they're still working on a negotiated purchase for the Bluff neighborhood. That's obviously something that, it's a concern to us, and we'd like to see how that's handled. There's still a number of outstanding issues relative to business licensing and dock construction, and I think we'll be working on hopefully some solutions to address that long term. We're working on some dates in November, December to allow us to get together with them and work those things out. Sands Beach Task Force, once you guys have selected the members for that particular task force, like I had mentioned, we will be, I've, I've engaged the landscape architect to come up with somewhat of a scope of an idea of what we'd like to see there. Obviously, their primary concern is Sands Beach Park, not Sands Beach. And then relative to Sands Beach, maybe if they were to explore some potential connectivity between those things, I think that would be, something would be within their purview, but understanding it's Sands Beach Park, not Sands Beach. Chief Search, kind of old news now, but obviously, we selected Jeffrey Myers, his start date is October seventh. Ron is still here. He has graciously decided to stay a little bit longer to help with the transition.
Thank you, Ron.
So he didn't know we were going to almost have a hurricane or these other things when he decided to do that, so here we are.
With a bang, yeah.
Exactly.
But no, we, once he gets started, we've talked about having some sort of social night, having, you know, meet the chief kind of night, so, but once he gets started, like he said, the seventh, kind of get in here, get his feet under him, and then we want to kind of have an event, kind of, you know, meet the, meet the new chief, so we'll stay tuned for that.
Yeah, and kind of the next two items are, should be considered together. We are looking at trying to schedule a joint meeting with the city of Beaufort. Obviously, got a little bit sidetracked this last week, but obviously, one of the topics of discussion will be the referendum, what its potential impacts would be on both the city and the town. And, you know, we all know that within the referendum question, there's been dollars designated for each of municipalities, and I think it's kind of incumbent upon us to identify those projects that we would fund or advocate for funding as part of the referendum. And one of the things we will have on the agenda for next week is if the referendum were to pass, there's a citizen kind of oversight group, and we will need to have some representation there. So we'll have one seat that we need to, to work on.
Do we need to, do we identify projects for that?
I, I think
Is it this kind of idea we would like to, or?
Right. Well, yeah, I think it's, so people have an understanding that it's just not a ten million dollar pot of money that you guys will dip into, that there'll be specific projects, such as Paris Avenue.
Yeah, and that's got a price sticker of what?
Yeah, it's about sixteen million dollars.
Sixteen million dollars, all right.
Yeah.
So there's one?
Yes, and that's, you know, five million dollars in burying power lines, which would probably be pretty important right now. So that's a major component of that project. Obviously, potential spine road, it's part of the, and then any sort of improvements we anticipated along Rebo Road through the efforts of the redevelopment commission or through the two various studies that we undertook, tool, those sorts of things, so.
And would you just say the price sticker on running the sewer would place?
That's about six to seven.
Six to seven to get the, so there's, I mean, we've got projects, so.
Yeah. All right. And then ARPA, in your folder is the updated table on expenditures. You know, it's kind of broken down by Town Hall, Police Department, Public Works, projects, it kind of gives you an idea. Can you just real quick, I'll pull this up, kind of where we stand in terms of where we were on September thirtieth and kind of what we've got set aside now. I know there are other things that y'all were wanting us to consider, but all of this money has to be under contract prior to the end of the calendar year.
And just so everyone knows, when you hear ARPA, that's the American Rescue Plan Act, and that was, I don't know if we remember, we, every day is like so fast now, but remember COVID? Remember, remember COVID?
Yeah.
So during COVID, the federal government, you know, they, the money came down to the states, that money was divvied out to the counties and then divvied out to municipalities based on their size. And so that's the money that we received during the COVID stimulus package, so.
Okay, there's
And there's some, there are some restrictions on what you can spend it on. It's not just a, here's a blank check, go do what you like. There are limits and requirements that you have, but right now, we're trying to firm up exactly where it's all going to go, and so, because we're not giving any of it back.
This is great. I like it. Great. So, but yeah, just if you go through the table, you're getting kind of a feel for what the scope of those things are, and obviously, we have to bring those things back for y'all's review and final approval. And I know, I know that there was some discussion amongst council about something that y'all would like to, thus consider, I just, you know, we can do that.
No, and just like, I know, we talked about doing something for the families and kids. We talked about maybe potentially looking at a park and trying to get a splash pad in Port Royal. We hear that from a ton of families, they would love that. So we're looking at kind of something, we're talking about just doing something from council to the community, and we thought that would be something that a lot of people could enjoy with the young families and kids. I hear that from people all the time. So now it's just potentially locating a space because we've, it would fit if we did it, but now it's where do you put it? And how big is it? And exactly how does it work, so, but.
Yeah. And just ballparking, that's a two hundred fifty, three hundred thousand dollars. Yeah, just got you. Real quickly, excuse me, kind of a storm update. Obviously, we filed the, the claim with the insurance company relative to the damage done to the boardwalk. The structural engineer was out, you know, walked, walked what he could of it, has evaluated the observation tower for its structural soundness. We were in the process of reviewing it anyways. There's certainly some rail sections that are missing that we need to address. Both Public Works and Southern Pametta are basically going street by street. I think they've got all of downtown, and I think we received a list today of the streets that they've, they've covered on the other side of town.
Do you know how many, how many bins have they pulled out?
Uh, we, we were, this morning, we were up to nine.
On Monday, it was like seven. They'd already pulled up seven dumpster loads.
Right, and I think we're in double digits now. They'll continue to do that until we have wrapped up. We just felt it was necessary to kind of move through, not a single day for a one, one-day pickup, more of a process. And Southern Pametta, I've got to give them some kudos, they did show up the day after the storm and really get after it.
They were there all, they were there all Friday, yeah. And to the citizens too, so many people, I went around the communities and they cleaned up their yards, and just if you drive around now, power's back on and everybody's just got their little piles sitting in the front yard. Have you heard, they're, they're going street by street, and they're going to get to it. So just give us a little patience on that, they're working as fast as they can, and it'll get all back to normal, so.
Yeah, and one of the other things, you know, obviously, the, the police department is, has a generator that activates, but we're trying to figure out what we could conceivably do here. You know, we have some floodplain issues, so the thought of a, kind of a generated, generator on site might be a little bit challenging, it could be elevated, but, you know, should we explore solar panels is an option, or at least become a gathering place like you mentioned.
Yeah, and that was, that was something, you know, we, we talked about after this hurricane again, was just how do we get better, you know? I mean, we're not perfect, and we can always get better, as we, I thought we handled it well, but, and one of those things was trying to find and create a place that in that situation, again, where can citizens go? And so it was maybe we look at solar panels on the town hall, so it will always have power, there's no trees around it sun. So worst-case scenario, you come here and charge your phones, we can have water for people here, or maybe, like you said, a generator. So again, we're having those conversations after that, and then we always go to, how do we, yeah, Wi-Fi providing that, how can we get better in an event that this happens again? So just, those are some interesting ideas we've talked about. If you could, what's the, the process that everybody knows on the boat, the ramp, the boat lane?
We had, our memorandum of agreement with the county is that obviously, they are responsible for kind of maintenance and upkeep of the facility, and we have reported the, that we have at least two of the three lanes need to be looked at and repaired prior to opening, reopening the boat lane.
And the actual dock is?
We, we're deferring to the county.
That's what I'm saying, but I just want people to know, when, when that's blocked off, that's why that is.
Yeah.
It's been examined, it has been deemed unsafe, and we have put in our request, I'm sure there's other docks that they're getting to as well from the hurricane, but as you, as you just heard, the, our memorandum with the county is, they, we own it, they do the maintenance of it. That was the deal. We've reached out to them, they've looked at it. There's two sections, I think I've heard, that probably need either be repaired or replaced, but just want everybody to know that we are aware of them and working on them, and we were already getting bids, I think you said, for the, for the boardwalk coming in, so.
Yeah. All right. And then, yeah, that's basically what we wanted to cover in the brief.
And just, yeah, reiterate, you mentioned it, but I don't know if you see what's going on with the city of Beaufort and their waterfront park. When we are, as you heard, and I'm really glad we're going to do that, when we rebuild the part that washed away, there will be a examination of the entire structure and the tower as well, too. So I mean, just get it whole, make sure every, while we're out there, might as well just make sure everything's good to go for the future, so. Anything else for council?
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Up next, reviewing the agenda for next week, October ninth, twenty twenty-four.
All right. Yeah, you know, we will have one proclamation. We also have that evening a presentation from Help of Beaufort and Trunk or Treat. The next item is a resolution that was passed by the State House, and this is in recognition of the town's one hundred and fiftieth birthday, as well as the efforts of HBRF, so we'll have Representative Erickson here to make that presentation. Then we have that presentation. Then we have first reading, 2024-17, Norde submitting Chapter Two, Administration, Article Boards, Committees, Commissions, Division, Redevelopment Commission. They, they submitted a formal request to the, to Town Council to consider a broadening of their responsibilities to include Edinburgh Avenue and Paris Avenue. I do have our attorney reviewing, enabling legislation to make sure that that is something that could be done. Redevelopment commissions are empowered in certain ways, but a lot of it is contingent upon it air being blighted and in need of redevelopment, it's obviously focused on commercial properties. So we will evaluate where Paris and Edinburgh fit into that and whether that can be something that can be done.
Yeah, so, and with that, just so everyone knows, when, when you hear redevelopment committee, that's actually something that is designated and created by the state statute, that is a state statute that allows municipalities to stand up a redevelopment committee. It's not, like, Port Royal just made up the redevelopment committee, it's actually in the state codes. And because of that, it's restricted, there's, you know, things they can do, things they can't do, they have procedures and requirements that they have to apply, they have to abide by. Again, because it's not just a redevelopment committee that we stand up, they are governed by state statute, and so we are just going to take a minute to make sure what they're asking we can do. So I don't know how long that'll take, so maybe we need to push that back to a next meeting to get a clear answer on that. So make sure that we're doing it the right way.
All right. And then second readings, 2024-14, Norde's to amend Chapter 20 Trees of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Port Royal, South Carolina. I just kind of gave you all simplistic summarization under that, you know, regarding revised species lists, some accessions, exceptions due to establishing the family lives of record, and some relief relative to replanting and repayment or payment, but the fees would remain the same, correct?
Right.
Any questions? I'm sure Noah would be happy to answer anything about trees right now.
We've had him stand up here for the past, I don't know, six meetings in a row, so good job.
And then finally, appointments. We have one planning commission appointment for your consideration. And then Citizen Oversight Committee, one as well.
And this is something that we, again, have to stand up. If the penny tax passes in November, there is a citizens committee, that was a big thing that they made it, that originally the committee was going to have elected officials on it, they came down and said no, they came down and said that it's just only going to be citizens, of course that's deviated, was this municipality puts one, this municipality puts one, two are from the county and all that, but there's no elected officials. So we're required to nominate someone for that committee, for if it does pass, how that money is spent and that process going forward, so.
All right.
We got some important dates, but we'll reiterate those again. We got Redevelopment Commission on the 15th, trunk or treat the 27th, Planning Commission on the 28th, Short Term Rental Task Force every Thursday at 4:00. Okay. That's the agenda for next.
Yeah, Design Review Board is Thursday the 3rd at 5:30, and then on Tuesday, October 8th is the SCDBA Living Shoreline Press Conference, this was the rescheduled event, this is that grant that we received that's really basically working with Paris, Paris Island, and it's pretty significant, so.
No, this will be great. If you're, if you're available that day, I would encourage you to come out. It's actually going to be over here on Safe Harbor's property on the concrete slab where the old concrete building used to be, and it is, it's, it was planned for the last hurricane, when Debbie came through, and we had to reschedule it because of Debbie. So now it's rescheduled for October 8th, and like I said, it's going to be a real, really big thing. It's, we're talking about building living shores on Paris Avenue, not Paris Avenue, Paris Island.
That'd be cool, too.
And, and just trying to keep Paris Island as resilient as possibly can, and make sure it's there, supporting not just this country, not just, not just this community, but the country and the entire world. Paris, Paris Island is known all around the world, and so we want to see it in Port Royal for as long as it possibly can be, and resiliency is a part of that process, so.
Next two, we've got an invite about that.
Yes, right now, bagel. If you want to come, cameras, all kinds of state representatives, it'll be a big, big thing, so.
Okay.
Okay, and again, council meeting next Wednesday, and Short Term Rental Task Force is free Thursday at 4:00. Anything from council before we get to the comment?
I haven't.
All right, up next, I got public comment here. And we'll just do, I don't know what's from what, if one was for the public comment earlier, if it's for the workshop, but we'll just go ahead and knock them all out. Up next, up first, public comment, Megan Morris from the Beaufort Regional Chamber.
Good evening, council, thank you for taking my comment in this session. I'm Megan Morris of the Beaufort Regional Chamber of Commerce. Back in April 2023, the Chambers of Country Land Council did share concerns on behalf of our members in the private sector about the original tree ordinance. On its passage, council agreed to reevaluate, and in the meantime, you received input from citizens who were impacted. Thank you for sticking to your word and reevaluating, and going through that revision process. Our key reasons for concern were the likelihood that the ordinance would have unintended consequences, like inhibiting commercial development in targeted areas, making housing less affordable, and limit missing middle options that we know we need in housing, and possibly, you know, stymying the town's tax growth, tax base growth. The revised version that I've looked through, I need to do a deeper dive. The revised version is still strong in its tree protection, but does reduce the number of protected species, improves exemptions, and reduces replacement rates, and it also does identify the key commercial areas. Smart growth and a balanced approach to policymaking should support the greater good and goals of the town. The chamber and its members want to see Port Royal succeed and evolve while maintaining its identity and creating a prosperous environment for both residents and businesses. So we stand ready to collaborate and share perspective as you seek the input that you need to make decisions for the public. This version of the tree ordinance that was part of public hearing tonight is more reasonable than its original form, and hopefully helps you all move forward. I look forward to our continued collaboration, and I think Jorge, you're the only one that's new on council since then, so I'd be happy to reshare the letter we originally sent back in April 2023. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Megan.
And Megan, thank you so much. I just wanted, with the chamber, this isn't about the trees, but I just thought, I really thought that was a great gesture. I saw during the hurricane, soon as you got yours, y'all's Wi-Fi on, you opened it up and said, oh, if you need Wi-Fi, if you need to use office space, come on by. I thought that was a really, really nice gesture, and so thank you for the chamber for doing that. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, Mrs. Lori Flingan. Did I say your last name right?
Thalen.
Thalen, okay.
Lori Thalen, 13th Street, between Madrid and Columbia. Hello, everybody. Thank you for letting me speak today. I'm a relatively new resident here, I've been here for 15 months. Well familiar with Van, Noah, they know me, thank you, we talked over the weekend. I wanted to speak on the storm response. I love this town, there's so many things that are wonderful here and that you do right. That doesn't mean there's not room for more improvements. I am full of ideas, thank you for listening, and I see that many of them have been taken to heart and are being actionable. I am full of more ideas, I would like to step up if you have a lean process improvement on your response for emergencies and events. I would like to be a community member and volunteer for that. As far as the stimulus money, my vote is for undergrounding the overhead wires. On 13th Street, we had a major problem, that two dead trees that were known that were on a long-term rental came down, broke the pole, the transformer, broke the lines, they blocked the, the street. And I was a lot of concern because those lines stretched across four houses. Had there been a spark under that tree, there would have been a fire, and there was no access to the road. I think about the things that I see that could be improved upon, and what comes down to it is that it's a liability. And if there was anything to happen bad, thank God, nothing happened, and we're just inconvenienced by not having power and internet, if there had been anything bad, I think about the liability that this town would have held, and that would bankrupt the town. So I personally don't want to see that happen, and if I can be a part of that, I would like to. So, that, you took the wind out of my sails from your book, your conversation, so that was pretty much all of my list. So, thank you very much.
No, thank you. And Lori, yeah, when I came over to you, when they were fixing 13th Street, they, you had the solar panels out, and the, and that was kind of, oh, those are so cool, and I'm getting some now, that was, they were, the solar panels, they're flat, they're about a piece of cardboard, they had them laying in their front yard, and they were running a little generator that was running the refrigerator in their house. And it was, it was literally like, they were like this thin and maybe, you know, that big, and you had two.
We brought it from California.
Yeah, no, they were super cool.
We're getting a bigger one.
I'd never seen that before, and they were just laying in your front yard, and I was like, what is that doing? You're like, it's keeping the refrigerator running. Wow, that's, that's pretty cool, so.
So we'll be getting a bigger one, and while we were dealing with all of this online, I did get a thing about Tesla and their power board, and there was a special from Dominion Energy that they were doing. This is a perfect test case. The stimulus package money would be well spent to do that, that would be like pennies of that, that would be $10,000. You could power this building, this should be a recipe place, and everything's up there, you have a perfect roof for solar panels. And not only would that be money that you could save, you could spend on other things, you know, it's a whole lean process improvement. So.
Thank you.
So I've got lots of more ideas, so please use me, tap me. This is my wheelhouse, this is what I did in San Francisco, and I would welcome to do it here.
Okay. Yes, ma'am, thank you so much, Lori.
Thank you.
Yes? Absolutely. Up next, Mr. Bill Entwistle.
Bill Entwistle, I'm here on behalf of Angela Wright this evening, who's the co-chair of the Local Country Pride, and they're having their event November 9th. And she spoke last month, she couldn't be here tonight because she's part two of the Civics and Suds over at Shell Ring. Thank you for participating last, two weeks ago there. And she had asked when she was here last month about having a little parade kickoff the festival that Saturday, started at 11, and she already met with Captain Massey about the route, and they had talked about a route going from 14th down Paris, turning on 12, coming back on London, turning back on 14, so it's a little parade. And so I'm just following up because she couldn't be here tonight.
Thank you, Bill.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And that was one where Bill was talking about they had an event, what is, I didn't know the name of it.
Civic and Suds.
Civics and Suds, right. So, yeah, they, last, two weeks ago, I can't remember, yeah, they had, it was that Shell Ring, and it was just to kind of inform people about government, how it works. They had someone speak about federal government, they had someone speak about the state government, and then I was there to speak about local government, and literally just talk about what at-large means as opposed to districts, what nonpartisan, just kind of how local government works. So I think it's really important to just let people know, it's amazing to me how many people don't even know what district they live in, don't even know who their representative is. So, so things like that are really great. So thank you, Bill. Up next, Ms. Jessie White.
Thank you, good evening, Jessie White with the Coastal Conservation League. I apologize, I was late and missed the public hearing, so I am giving my comments now. Really just wanting to commend council for continued leadership and continued commitment to a strong tree ordinance. It really sets a high standard for the region and for the state, and it really reflects how much you care about balance and what makes Port Royal, its community, and its natural features so special. I wanted to share a little anecdote, just a couple weeks ago, I had a couple of colleagues come down from Charleston who hadn't been here before, and they were in absolute awe driving around Port Royal. They could not get over how beautiful it was, all of the magnificent, magnificent trees, and how kind of the built environment was just fitting in so nicely around all the trees, and everything was so vibrant, and they just had no idea, and so it really was amazing, and I think that's what makes Port Royal so special and what you're trying to protect, that we can have both, that we can have our natural environment and built environments coexisting.
You did tell them not to tell any more Charleston people.
They, they went back to Charleston, don't worry. But in addition, I also wanted to thank staff, thank Noah and Brooke for all their time and efforts in really crafting standards that are both protective and reasonable. We, we believe that the, the draft that you will be having second reading on next week strikes the right balance, and really is considerate of all the interests that are at stake, and is both manageable but also productive. So thank you for setting the bar high and keeping it high.
Thank you. Thank you, Jessie, for all your work. Okay, up next, last one, but we will have someone out there that wants to hop on, Mr. Nick Borgini.
Good evening, good evening. Mr. Mayor, council, staff, thanks for letting me speak. I really, I had planned on having a prepared statement, but I, I actually just wrote it while I was sitting there. So I, I really just wanted to thank the town, town staff, I mean, the, this hurricane, I mean, no one expected this. It was, you know, I kept telling everybody, ah, it's not going to be anything, it's not going to be anything, you know, you know, I've lived here 25 years, I guess, you know, I've learned a thing now. So, anyway, I've done business in many municipalities in Beaufort County, and I've never, not once, had the communication that I had during this experience. And trying to run a business, keep people employed, and make sure my perishable goods are not perish, don't go bad, communication with utility companies. I mean, Mr. Mayor, he called me, a phone call, you know, when his day, I know, was extremely busy. So, you know, that's fantastic. So thank you so much. In addition, OVA, thank you so much for pushing forward with Oktoberfest. There's many people that were out there in booths that rely on that income to survive, and quite honestly, I'm, you know, part of that. So, so thank you for pushing forward to that, and thank you, Seth, for, for making it happen. I, I really just wanted to commend you, just to everybody, what a great job, and, you know, I'm proud to live here, I wish I lived here, I'm proud to do business here.
Absolutely.
Okay. So, in short, this is the best town, we're fortunate to have each of you in, you know, at, sitting at those tables, and Nancy running OVA back there. You know, just thank you, thank you. On another note, I had planned on speaking on this, but the, about 52 hours ago, there was a group of folks that got together and announced that we were going to start collecting goods for North Carolina, and we just finished packing pallets and loading them about, you know, 10 minutes before I walked into the building. 72 pallets.
Wow.
72. These towns are, these towns are awesome. I mean, Beaufort and Port Royal are really amazing.
And that's from our community, that's not, that's not anything, that's not from all of Beaufort County, that is from all, that is from our community.
Well, I mean, we actually.
I'm not saying that in any negative way, I'm just kind of putting it, that's not like from all of Beaufort County, that's literally just north of the Bronx.
Yeah, I mean, there was, there were some people coming from Bluffton, but it was, it was, it was, it was heart-warming, heart-wrenching, and exhausting all at the same time, you know? It was, it was unbelievable, and, you know, it was just, it was 72 pounds. So, quite honestly, that's, that's a guess, you know, an under guess, but that's.
We can say 70.
Seven.
No, it's amazing, and y'all are going to leave tomorrow.
Eight, eight a.m.
Eight a.m., they're hitting the road, so everybody keep them in your prayers, just, you know, it's not the safest, so, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Real quick, though, can we get an update on scratch?
You know.
Coming along?
We, you know, we've had some delays. We're about two and a half weeks behind.
Okay.
We're close right now. We actually fed a lot of volunteers the last two days with some homemade pasta that we were kind of happy with, but, you know, it's real, so we're close.
We're all, we're all excited. Yeah, we're all looking forward to it. We'll be there for opening next.
Cannot wait.
Not as much as I am.
I don't know about that. That's like my favorite thing in the world.
I want to get back to my, to my desk.
Yeah, I love Italian.
It's going to be great to have an Italian place close, it's going to be awesome.
Thank you for doing what you do, and thank you for helping our community and always stepping up to do the beer for the Oktoberfest and for the wetlands. I mean, you know, that just puts you on the map and puts us on the map, and it's very important, and, you know, we, we can't tell you thank you enough for what you do for our community, so thank you.
Well, thank you. Have a great night.
Thanks, you too. I don't have any more papers, but, you know, public workshop, does anyone have any comments they'd like to make? Seeing none, anything, any comments from council? If I want to see? Okay. At this time, we do have an executive session to discuss personnel for committee decisions, so we'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So move.
So move.
I'm gonna be...